Is here. We have four members here in person and Michelle Brown and Bill Padulka are on Zoom. Also, welcome to Nan Stolzenberg and our liaison, Tim Murray. And we also have four or five visitors. So, welcome everyone. Our agenda this evening is we have. We have minutes which I updated today. Does anyone want to move the minutes of January 31st?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And Gina, I'll abstain since I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, well, okay, so that passes and we have two presentations. Thank you. And Tim, do you have a report?
The only report I have is on behalf of the town board. I'd like to thank the zoning commission. For your excellent handling of the public hearings. We thought that they were expertly organized and run. And in the midst of that, I know that you've received, we've received the town board as well. Quite a number of. Written comments that have come in the wake of that as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think. I sent out the written comments by email to everyone and I think. Jesse has made copies for people. Marking half those or?
Um. I don't have the physical copies. I.
Okay.
Would you like to make? I could go get some.
No, I think Jesse was gonna make them and so I will, we'll check with her. Well, you can probably stop in this week if you want to pick up a copy. But we all got them by email as well, so. So, we have this evening to discuss. Things that were brought up at the public hearings that we want to discuss. I know that. Bill made a terrific list. Other people have sent in things that they want to talk about as well. So.
Is there a privilege of the floor?
Oh, yes, I totally forgot before my brain is like. My brain is truly fried. Do we have anyone who wants to speak to privilege of the floor? Thank you, Ernie, for bringing it up because my brain was actually like turned off.
Nelson next.
Oh, Nelson next us.
What?
Mr. Mix. You are being unmuted. Mr. Mix, you have privilege of the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to turn on my camera also if I can get that. Oh. Can you hear me okay?
Tim, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, so anyway, maybe I'm a little late to the party. I submitted comments. Back in January and I don't know if you received him or not, Gene. I just saw the email that you sent that you checked your spam folder. But I went through the document and I provide, I tried to provide. Detailed articulate comments. With page numbers, sections. Specific recommendations and rational as to which, and if not accepted. You know, for a rationale to be returned as to why. The draft from November. I, you know, while I submitted my comments in early January, there was a subsequent draft. That that was dated the 31st and I believe the period for comments may have been shut off on March 3rd. I don't know if that's correct or not. And that's hence my statement to late to the party. But I would like my comments that. To be considered, the ones I submitted today have. Re, I changed the page numbers. They're essentially the same comments. A few were addressed of my original ones. There's about 35 in total. And so as far as. Process and protocol. That's what I, I, I bring to the floor for my privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mix. I don't usually respond to privilege of the floor, but I was putting this on the agenda for this evening anyway. I, let me just say what happened. Mr. Mix sent me an email sometime this afternoon, I think, and opened it and it said that he had sent in comments on January 2nd and I. Don't have them and I didn't, they're not in my spam folder nor my inbox. But he also sent them to the clerk. So, assuming that the clerk had them on that day. Then I think that we should consider them. And I sent copies of this all out to all of you this afternoon. So, we will, we will look at those, Mr. Mix, and some of them I know towards the end. There were things like, you know, why is there this like fine? That's because they're part of state law and it's a thing you have to include. In this, in this as you write it as a law. So, but we will get back to you and thank you for coming on and doing privilege of the floor this evening. I, as I, I think I wrote back to you, I sometimes think that the electrons are against us. Because things disappear in email occasionally. Thank you. Bill also has his hand raised. Bill?
Yeah, Gene, just to clarify, because I, you know, I think zoning commission hasn't necessarily decided. On a policy, you know, in. Sort of typical town. Things, specific responses to comments received on like a proposed law are not issued. I mean, we can decide as zoning commission to respond to people's comments. But that's something for us to discuss. So, I'll tell Mr. Mix here is if the zoning commission declines to give a formal response to his comments. I'd be happy to follow up with him personally. You know, later on, but at any rate, if we don't respond formally to you, that's why is that typically, at least in my understanding, town groups don't do this.
Yeah, Bill, you're absolutely right. I didn't mean that we were going to respond formally. I meant that I think that we will probably consider them because I think they were submitted long before March 3rd. So. Respond in the sense of look into what we had to write. So, I think privilege of the floor is over. I don't see any other privilege of the floor. Does anyone want to speak to privilege of the floor? No.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are we going to discuss any of the? Questions that were brought up that you set up your list out tonight?
Yes, that's what we're gonna do tonight.
Well, then I would like Martin to get a copy if I could.
Oh, of the, of the things that were sent because I think he didn't see them.
The public hearing comments. He would like a paper copy.
Yeah.
Can you get them now? Okay, okay, thank you.
And I guess I'm gonna say, anything I talk about tonight is not going to be based on the written comments. Because I haven't a chance to process those in any detail, so. You know, I think we're talking about things that we're going to talk about. That's first item on the agenda, I think. And we may start dealing with some of those, but as far as I'm concerned, there's going to be more topics added based on the written comments. I'm, I am not prepared to address written comments tonight. I want to. But, you know, receive them too late to do that for this meeting.
There are some of the things in the written comments are things that also were brought up in writing, in, in speech. And then a lot of them are very simply, I support this or I am against this. There's not detail.
Yeah, I skimmed the comments. I'm aware of all that. I think there may be some items we want to talk about in those and I just don't think we're ready to do it tonight.
Um, so, I think the first thing I had on the agenda was to make a list of what we were going to discuss. So, Bill had sent you all a list. You all have that?
No, I sent it only to you, Gene.
Okay, so I'll go through that. And it says. There's the whole, the, the thing that Peter DeBoer brought up. So, that's one. There's. The water resources overlay in general. Sorry, I'm on the wrong piece of paper here. So, there's the water resources overlay in general, and I think there's some specificity about looking at Sladeville and Brooktondale. Michelle had written to me about that.
Okay, can I pause for a second here, Gene? Sorry, I apologize. You're right. I did send out to everybody. I mean, Barbara sent out a list of things to everybody. I sent out a list of stuff to everybody. But then this afternoon, I tried to go through all the emails and pull everything together that everyone had said at some time or other, we ought to talk about this. And that's what I sent only to you. So, anyway, that's what I meant, sorry.
Okay, so let me. Pull that up because I also have a list, but I will start with that.
I don't care what you start with.
Okay. Report. Add a note that the public hearings indicated little support for the proposed law. Definitions add family. Change artist studio instructional space to artist studio complex. Slash instructional space and modify the definition. The over, the water overlay district, eliminate the overlay district. That's a question. Make what is where and what applies where more clear. And that's done in some. Long extent here. The use table, change artist studio to artist studio complex bakery with SPR. Add to certain places, commercial kitchen with SPR, convenience store with SPR. Industrial light use with SUP, offices with SPR. Outdoor recreation facility. School private with SPR staging storage or parking areas as a non-residential, non-agricultural use. Add a line for farm to table restaurant and make that use allowed in the ag rural district. Review multifamily lines and confirm or change the required level of review. The dimensions table increase allowed. Commercial building footprint in some districts. Article six supplementary standards parking. Review clarifying word for inventory and supplies. Confirm or change that meet all outdoor lighting's noise sign. Means the whole zoning law or just the standards of 6.2. Keep allowed percentage use as an accessory structure for a minor home occupation at 50%. Non-conforming uses discussed 25% is the maximum amount that non-conforming building may be defended. Then there are some typos which are essentially just typos. Is there anything else that wasn't mentioned on that bar? Could you have anything?
Yeah, we just need to clean up the wording for commercial recreation facilities indoor and outdoor because they don't match in the definitions of the use table.
Okay.
So. Sorry, and, and you missed the suggestion to increase the size of the commercial district.
I did miss that. I don't, I'll find it.
And again, I will say that I was a compiler and not necessarily an advocate of all these changes, just in case someone got their own impression.
Thank you for compiling. Your list was actually. Similar, but more detailed than my list. So, thank you for doing that and. Anyone else see anything that was brought up that you wanted to discuss? Ernie, Michelle? Okay. Um. So, let's, let's start with the two things that weren't on this list. That was the Barb and the recreational district. Um, you want to talk about where that would be in the?
Yeah, just there's a difference in the definitions in the use table. So, it's a matter of cleaning it up. And the definitions, they're referred to commercial recreation facility comma indoor and commercial recreation facility outdoor. In the use table, they refer to outdoor recreation facility comma commercial. And indoor recreation facility comma commercial. So. My suggestion would be to choose one and I guess I'll just make a motion that we. Choose the definition list, which is commercial recreation facility comma indoor or comma outdoor. And then the use table would need to change to correspond to that.
Okay. Ernie? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's approved. Okay, two was increased the size of the commercial area. There was a lot of discussion about our commercial area being too small. About some people feeling that all of Route 79 should be commercial. Some people feeling that there should be more commercial space on 79. I didn't really hear much about other commercial space rather than on 79. Does anyone have a? An idea of? Anything that they would like to suggest doing?
But I'll, I'll share my screen and again. You know, and I don't know if we're ready to make this decision tonight, but I, let me share, you know, I think I sent this map out to everybody, but at least share the screens to everyone there in the audience and we have something to talk about. I'm not saying this is, you know. Whatever the greatest. What I heard was increase the size, but also more road frontage. That was definitely a specific request. So, let me get rid of and zoom in a bit here. And I don't know, you know, again, it's hard. I think that to some extent, you know, there are those who indeed would like. You know, one of the complaints clearly is that. There's this Beesimer. Area that, that, you know, was set up to be primarily residential. And this is the debate, the Tuscaloosa Town is, is that the correct? You know, and best use for that area. But trying to. You know, do something, see if this is useful. There is, so here's our existing focused commercial district. And. One possibility, I really don't see going this way much because there's the school here. We already didn't, excluded this parcel because of all the wetlands on it. And so, you know, going the other direction is this way. And here's one possible thought. There is up, and I think, you know, one. Critique or one concern folks have is if I want to do some big use, I need some big vacant property to do it on and there ain't nothing like that around here. Now, it is true that of course zoning can change and. Things could be added or things could be rezoned in the future. And that's an important escape valve for the town as things evolve and grow and develop. But one possibility is, yeah, there is currently a vacant lot here, fairly large, fairly deep, so does not add a lot to the road frontage, but does give a lot of area. And then there's a bunch of small parcels, primarily residential. They could stay residential even if included in the commercial district, but it might give the opportunity. Five years, 10 years, whenever someone sells for that house to then be converted to some office space or. You know, something, a commercial use or not stays a resident. So, that's a thought. It would take this somewhat large parcel, this somewhat large parcel and a bunch of small parcels along Route 79 to give a fair amount of road frontage in separate parcels that. You know, again, I do not want to hamper. Business development in the town. I do want to guide business development to be in the most appropriate places. And so. This is a stab at that. Again, I don't know if we're ready to sign off on any changes tonight or if we want to be discussing pros and cons, but. There you go.
On, has Barbara and then Bruce?
It just, while Bill, you have the map up. If you could zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, I did just a little bit now. Is that good enough?
Make the map bigger. Make the map bigger because I'm going to make a comment that's going to refer to some other areas.
So, you want to see more of the map?
More of the map, yeah.
Okay, and that's all that I captured. I did not take the whole map. I do have.
That's fine for now. But yeah, this is just in reference to, and I know we're not, you know, technically discussing written comments, but just in the, in the context of. Discussing commercial area, one of the written commenters. Suggested specifically adding a parcel at the corner, adding to the focus commercial. A parcel at the corner of Ellis Hollow and 79. And a parcel at the corner of Midline and 79, which are both currently, as they presented it, unoccupied by structures. However, looking at those, those are some form of agricultural soils. So. Just to put that on the table in this discussion.
So, that was 79.
79 and Midline and 79 and Ellis Hollow. And I believe for both of those, what they were referencing would be the northwest corner of each of those intersections.
Okay.
Or they didn't specifically say that.
Yeah, but.
But I think that's interpreting what they said.
Okay, and. Both are excellent. Okay. Is there anything else along 79 that anyone want to discuss, Bruce?
Yeah, I would just. I mean, I know we're now. Deciding, but I'm not so sure. I would go up Snyder Hill like that. I think I might go down 79 a little more. And if you really look at. Out of all the acreage that we have. In the town of Carolina, only 0.2687 is. Commercial in. Which is a pretty small amount.
So, where do you mean by further down 79?
Well, can't see that just. Down 79. I can't really tell. Where that is right there at this point because I can't see that good.
From, from west. Sladeville, there's quite a bit of vacant land.
So, maybe Nan, could you put up a map? If you probably got it right there. If you, Bill, if you took that down and you allowed Nan to share her screen, you could probably pull up a map.
Yeah, I mean, I can pull up a whole zoning map if we want. I just, I just hadn't.
Why don't you just do that?
Okay, let me do that. And let's see if I can multitask here.
You don't have to. It's okay. Just single task. That's all we.
Yeah, well, I was gonna try to talk while doing it. It was probably a really bad idea. So, yeah, proposed zoning map. This must be. I'm looking.
I think that's my.
Reduced overly. There it is.
Yeah, I, I, I mailed her with a picture. It came up on my game camera last night.
Okay, here we go. Alright, so I have it here. This is the entire zoning map. And I, and I do just want to say, because we've said this, I think we all understand it. But this statement keeps being made that, wow, this is a small area to allow commercial in. That of course, commercial uses are allowed everywhere in the town. Not every commercial use is allowed everywhere. But it is, I think, you know. Erroneous to sort of look at this pink area as the only spot where a business can be. There is not just the hamlet zones, many of the ag zones have some commercial uses allowed in them. So, for context. That's all. Alright, so here's the whole map. What do people want to see?
I think, Ernie, do you want to, you want to see more, not Ernie, Bruce, you want to see more along West Sladeville?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I wouldn't particularly say. You know, right next to the school, but.
Okay, so.
Well, what is rural commercial next to the school? I guess I would point out that lots of schools exist in totally commercial areas. And coexist just fine. I think it's kind of a question of how the commercial uses plan. How the vehicular access works out, you know, conflicts like that change. This is not a school where kids are walking to it or even bicycling to it. They are the eastbound to this school. So. I don't necessarily conflict. But. You know, I, I don't see. Conflicts with. Commercial development of a certain scale. Pretty much a, along Route 79 or.
Michelle, I think you have your hand up.
I'm agreeing with that.
Michelle?
Yeah, I guess so. I would point out that maybe kids aren't bicycling or walking, but there's a lot of bus traffic that's going to be happening twice a day. And I think that would conflict. With the increased traffic that you're going to have in a commercial. We're talking large scale commercial area. And so, I guess I don't think it's appropriate to have large scale commercial. Right next to the school.
I guess I would say that, but the commercial we are currently allowing in these districts is not large scale by most stretches of the imagination.
But, but these are, these are, these, you're talking, what you're talking about, Ernie, I believe are allowed in many areas of the hamlets. Is that not right? In other words, we're talking about. Heavy exceptionally large commercial that were, people seem to be looking for more of that. Personally, I think we have enough space dedicated to that. But I don't think next to the school is necessarily appropriate because of the increased traffic. You have a lot of traffic. I don't know if you've ever driven down 79. When school is getting out, but tell, trust me, it is not pleasant. And so, if there's also commercial activity in addition to those buses, I think that's a problem.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Bruce?
Is what's on our, our list here focused commercial, the focus commercial is basically large commercial.
That's that one district.
Yes.
Right.
And that's.
But in all of those hamlets, there's businesses that are.
Right.
But I kind of agree with Ernie that I, you know. We're controlling what commercial business is going to blow away pretty much, so. I don't think we interfere either with the school or I just feel there should be more commercial in Route 79.
Well, so, so Bruce, would I hear you saying, and get me wrong, that that means you want this pink region to be bigger? Or do you, are you saying that you would like to increase the number of allowed commercial uses in the Beesimer and West Sladeville? And Sladeville Springs Hamlets and/or the Ag Rural?
I have both. I believe the commercial should be. Able to be on Route 79 where there's areas that it can be. Not just in that pink area.
Okay, but you can do something commercial here in Sladeville Springs, West Sladeville, and again, much smaller scale ones in Beesimer. But that's not good enough, I think is what I'm hearing from you. Am I correct? Okay.
Well. In order to move forward, someone actually has to make a motion of what they want to do. We're just saying more is not, is not useful. So, somebody tell me what they want.
Well, what, what I, I mean, I think. This is what I think that maybe we probably can't make a motion on tonight. I mean, I, I wanted it out there. I wanted to respond to what we were hearing and I wanted to think about it, but. Seems to me it might need more work or more thinking. But if someone has another proposal tonight, great, but I don't see. I guess I see this as something that we vote on at the next meeting because we hash out ideas now and then go out and. Draw lines, but that's how I would do it, but that's just me.
Okay, I'm going to bring up one other point. I have always, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Michelle. Michelle?
I just feel like we've had this discussion already. We've discussed, you know, for a while, we discussed expanding it out towards. The east and then we rejected that. And we've discussed expanding it. You know, further along Beesimer. And I think I pointed out that, you know, Dryden has that zoned as residential. So, I feel like we've had the discussion and I think personally, I'm, I'm kind of done discussing it, but. That's just my opinion, but I'm not ready to, so I'm not ready to make a motion.
Okay. I was, thank you for bringing up the thing about west side, the, the, to the west of Sladeville Road because I think that was enough, was the other place that we discussed. Bruce?
I'm just gonna say that everything that we've heard says that we should be discussing this.
Ernie?
I mean, I, I too feel that we have gone through all this stuff, but I do not want that to become. Kind of a. Necessary condition that stuff that we have gone over before cannot be rethought in, in the context of. What we've heard from the public. I think that we've all. Come from very different positions at the beginning of this journey. And we're going to end up in somewhat different positions than we started out with at the end. So. I think that revisiting any and all of these things is perfectly legitimate. Although I do not want to and we can.
Michelle, again?
Well, I just think at some point the town board has to weigh in on this and it might be nice to just. Get this over with and pass it on to the town board so they can weigh in on it. They're the ones that have to make the final decision. We're just presenting a draft.
Great.
Okay, um. I'm going to ask this. If you have. An idea that you wanted to discuss, because it seems to me we're going to meet next week. And you want to suggest a specific place to make a change. Either on this map for focus commercial or to change, or to put another focus commercial area in. Or to increase the kind of commercial that could occur in some of the. Areas along the hamlets along 79, please get those to me by like Thursday so that we have a chance to all think about them this week. And we come back next week, are ready to, to move ahead on that. So, I think that makes a good deal of sense. Because I said it.
I, I didn't say it and I still think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so get stuff to me by Thursday. Because, you know, there's nothing I like more than email. And that's a lie. Okay, I'll just make my notes. Let's go back then and look at. The list that. Bill did. So, add a note that the public hearings indicated little support for the proposed law. I. Peter Hoyt had also suggested that at one of the public hearings and gave us some wording that he thought to include. We've had some discussion over this. I said I didn't have an objection to adding. Something in there that says, I mean, you'd have to be deaf, dumb and blind not to know that this is, people are divided on this issue, that there is. Appears to be very strong support against zoning and there appears to be. At least strong support for zoning as you see the signs through the town that say. Support zoning. So, we've got, and. You know, and we've had lots and lots of people writing to us over the, over the two years. So, I don't have any objection to adding something to that. I will be happy to write something and get it out to people to look at. Does that seem reasonable? Anybody want to sug- Anybody want to suggest anything? Barbara?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that that a statement be included that indicates that uh both um support for and opposition to um the idea of zoning for the town of Caroline was expressed in both the oral and the written comments uh associated with public hearings.
So I could don't want to include anything that would suggest that there were more of one than the other.
I don't think it's appropriate to include numeric um numeric um because we didn't uh keep a close count and and also the quality of the comments and the content of the comments um differed over who was looking at them. So no, I don't. I don't think it's appropriate to mention numeric to to imply some sort of quantitative assessment.
Well.
Um, Barbara has a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second before we have discussion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michelle. Discussion.
There, I I would just say I did keep a record of during the public hearings of uh the number of separate individuals speaking for and against and and I share those. I understand that we have written comments. And I think that we have all said the written comments are very, very, every bit as as valid as uh people's comments and this, so I don't think that these numbers are should be used at this point, but in conjunction with the the written comments, we could actually do a tally.
Okay, do I have any other comment?
I do.
Bruce and then Bill.
Yeah, I feel that 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 is our job is on our report is to express actually what we saw and what we've done and what we heard. Well, like you said, like Ernie said, we could tell it up. It wouldn't be hard to do because I kept track also. And uh I believe that there's pretty big discussion.
I don't know how much it helps the town board just to have those numbers. Um, so I'm not insisting that we include them. I just think that it's important that in the record somewhere it references that in the public view, if the public in if public input was skewed to be non-zoned, so.
Um, Bill?
So, I mean, you know, I I sort of trying to speak to Barb's motion, but you know, on this whole topic. Um, I basically my position is that a comments of any of this sort really aren't certainly aren't needed and probably aren't appropriate for this report. Uh, this report in one sense functions as um the legal justification for the validity of passing zoning. Because if the zoning is challenged and you say, well, no, we actually followed all the steps the the state told us to, and here they are, boom, 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 boom. That's part of the purpose of preliminary report. I don't believe the state asked us to do some sort of survey of the constituents, but if we did that, which I think is difficult to do, we could say, as Ernie suggested, that the in-person public hearings indicated little support for proposed law. And we could say then, because I did tally it up already, that two thirds of the written comments voiced support for the proposed zoning law. So that's another option of how to go. But I actually think either statement is superfluous to the report. What I really would ask Ernie and Bruce is what is the purpose of including that statement? Because to me, the simple statement uh hearings indicated little support for the proposed zoning law sort of begs. Okay, so then what? Do we then say, and therefore we recommend the town board not pass this zoning law? Or do we say the project ought to proceed very cautiously because of this perceived lack of support? Or, as I said in the email so much snarkly, or do we then go into a a page long treatise on the sociological and psychological reasons why when there's a government action proposed, those opposed to the action always turn out in greater numbers? So I think the number is meaningless and not needed. So I would not put anything like that in there. But at the very least, we might want to characterize the difference in the in-person versus written report uh tally. But I actually think, again, I would not really want to go there. So that's my view.
Okay.
But I listened to hearing why they think it's so important to have this number in there.
Um, Bruce, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, did you say there was two thirds in the written?
Of the written reports. Now, there are fewer written, but there are two thirds of them. Uh, there's a comment I know from Irene that didn't make into that tally. I'm chasing down why it didn't, but I basically have uh about, yeah, twelve and six or something like that. I can't remember my tally right now.
How many comments were there, Bill?
He said eighteen.
I I they twelve and six adds to eighteen, but I could have missed one or two. I I have to, I don't have my notes in front of me and maybe I'm misremembering. So I'm not trying to characterize the number of different things. Does a written comment count more or less than oral comment? Does an oral comment count more or less than a written comment? Does the, you know, eh 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 anyway, the real bottom line is that none of this is an accurate survey of sentiment.
Okay.
It might underrepresent opposition.
Thank you. Bruce and then Ernie.
Yeah, I I don't feel that we were taking any survey or anything like you suggested. I don't feel that you're 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 doing exactly what I don't think the public wants to see being done. This is what we saw. This is what was presented to us, and everybody knows that. So if you don't state that, I think you're making a big mistake.
Yes, my my point was that um, you know, zoning by law cannot proceed to a referendum. Um, the public is given the opportunity to come to our meetings and to raise questions of privilege on the floor. We've also had question and answer sessions, but at the end of the day, the public hearing is the only thing in the law where the public is really granted a place to make their voices heard. And although, you know, I I agree that you know, you have to kind of sift through the individual comments to pull out something that is really truly uh meaningful, but um I find that even the most poorly worded opposition is something that has to be counted as highly as the most eloquently worded support. Um, so um that being said, I just think it's not inappropriate to recognize um that there is a fairly vocal opposition to this, even if it's just to say there's at least as much opposition as there is um support. I mean, it's just it's clear that this is not heavily supported in this community.
Okay, um, do we really need to discuss this more or can we vote on it?
I would like to vote on it. I think we should just vote on it.
That's calling the question. I'm calling the question.
Can you read the motion again?
Uh, yes, this is the motion.
Called is Barb's motion, and then we might need to go to a different motion.
Yes, this is Barb and Michelle's motion that there should be something in the written report that shows that there has been support for uh both support for and opposition to expressed in the oral and written comments. That's the motion. All in favor of that, say aye.
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 Aye, that's three. Against?
Nay.
Nay? Nah, you have to say it aloud, may? Okay, so that fails. Does anyone want to support anything else? I suggest that we look at the at the written motions and come back to this next week. That's my suggestion. Okay, so the next thing on this list is I gotta get to it on my computer. Uh, the definition definition of family. One or more people sharing the entire dwelling unit who live and cook together as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit, sharing expenses for food, housing, for example, rent, mortgage, utilities or other household expenses. Persons in the family unit may may or may not be related by blood, marriage or legal adoption. So that was the suggestion to add this by to the to the to the definitions.
Yeah, and if I could just give a little context for that, um I propose that based on reviewing the New York Department of State Legal Memorandum LU zero five, definition of family and zoning law and billing building codes. And uh want to note specifically that some zoning laws specify that family members must be related by blood, marriage or adoption. Uh, this definition would not do that. I don't believe that's appropriate for the town of Caroline. Also, other zoning laws have specified a maximum number of non-related adults, usually two or three, who can be considered a family. And again, I suggest that Caroline's uh definition should not.
Okay, so essentially you're saying a family is a group of people who live together.
Uh, well.
Yeah, in those, yeah, in those circumstances.
We we, yeah, the important thing of not profit sharing, it said, or we're not profit making, or whatever it was. Yeah, nonprofit household.
Okay, so um I'm assuming that's a motion.
I'll second it.
So that's for I've been billed. Any discussion?
Yeah, what was the second part you read about the adults? Now.
Persons is the, oh, here.
Do you want me to read the definition? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, family. One or more people sharing the entire dwelling unit who live and cook together as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit. Sharing expenses for food, housing, example, rent, mortgage, utilities or other household expenses. Persons in the family unit may or may not be related by blood, marriage or legal adoption.
Okay.
The the point being that like in the city of Ithaca, they actually describe the family unit as being people that are related in a certain way so that they don't get houses full of all sorts of unrelated people where they're just renting rooms. Um, and it's now a multifamily housing, this new policy.
Right.
Um, we just don't, doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem necessary out here.
Okay. Uh, hearing no more discussion, all in favor of adopting that definition of family, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, change artist studios slash instructional space to artist studio complex slash instructional space and modify the definition so that it is clear that this refers to group use of a building and not a home occupation. Michelle, I think you had brought this up at some point, too. You want to say anything?
Oh, I I'm doing that in response to, I believe at the last meeting, Renee Farrell brought that up. Um, and it seemed to me that she was confused about artist studio and I've heard other people say, oh, zoning means I can't uh be an artist in my own home, uh which isn't true. So um I I think it is a little confusing, lumping just artist studio with maker space because it does sound like it's just one person working. And and what we're talking about is a building that would house uh a number of artists who are sharing space or renting space or something.
Right, so Nan? Can I ask you to to take what we're saying at tonight and make that into a definition?
Um, yeah, I'm looking through the emails. As long as I, so you're you want to take out maker space and make that a a separate line item or keep that together, just expanding the artist studio complex?
Right, you're adding the word complex to artist studio in the line item in the use table. But then um since we now talk about artist studio complex, we should probably talk about, you know, in the definition section, we can describe what that is. And I think where currently says artist studio in the definitions, we can just somehow reword that to make it clear that you know, an artist studio complex is, as Michelle sort of just put it, a building where several artists maybe share space or something, but I.
Okay.
So an artist studio complex is something like the torpedo factory and outside of Washington DC where you know, hundreds of artists share a big space uh or this thing on South Hill here. But, yeah, and the other is is you know, you either have something in your own home or in an adjunct or in a building and it's a home use. Right?
Yep. Okay, I can add that.
You could just add a another definition for artist complex and say a group of artists or something, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That is a psychological problem, actually. Never mind. Okay, so with that um that we are going to get a new definition, we're going to have her do that. We will look at it this week as it comes in.
We we we, are you going to vote? I mean, we didn't vote yet that we should actually do this.
Right.
Um, I think Michelle moved it. I'll certainly second that motion.
Okay. All in favor of going ahead and doing this?
Wait, wait. You just make a comment. My comment would be that um, you know, we're, it's just as a general rule, it's too late to get into this now, but um, you know, making up definitions for things that don't exist in the town of Caroline with the idea that they're going to happen in the future could go on forever and ever and ever. We can make up every profession in the world and create a space and put it in the zone somewhere, so let's not go overboard here. Um, I think that everybody understands that an artist working in the studio is at worst, a home occupation, nobody in his right mind is going to confuse that with the commercial operation that is going to be banned anywhere, so.
Well, we already saw at least a couple of people confused about that, Ernie, but I agree with you, not to go overboard, but this was to address what appeared to be um.
That's to address some confusion that I've witnessed, okay?
Okay, let us um all in favor of this definitional change, say aye.
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 Passes, okay, thank you.
So there's one more definitional change.
Okay.
I don't think you captured in your list. Um, and and that's that in the use table, there's a use for staging, storage and parking areas.
Ah.
Uh, but there's no definition, so I'd like to move that a definition be added. I don't have the definition to suggest, but I'm just moving that a definition be added.
Okay, and Nan, you'll work on that?
I will.
Thank you. Okay, uh, and everyone is fine with that? That was a motion by by Barbara and that was seconded by me, and I want to see everyone going aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. No pressure.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so now we're going to go back up to the overlay district. This is complicated. So um, there clearly is a lot of confusion about the overlay district. And there is um angst about the overlay district. And um so Bill, I know that you've tried to think about how to do this, so you want to describe what your thoughts were?
Sure, though, as you saw, I put out an array of options because I don't know the best or the right thing. And this is another thing on which I think that, you know, we're making an initial foray or stab at a discussion tonight with then some pondering time and a decision to be made at at the next meeting or or whatever. Um, so there were specific calls in in comments to eliminate the water resource overlay district. So that's, I think, one option on the table. Should we just jettison it since um it causes a certain amount of consternation? Um, but the if we don't do that, then what are some changes that might be made? Some of the changes could simply be some clarification. So, you know, in my long missive, um, as I outlined, it's clear that there's some um confusion, conflation of what's going on, that there's a fair amount of the water resources overlay that is wetlands. Um, but when people look at the map, they aren't distinguishing between new things the town is adding, which is mainly riparian zones um and those wetlands. And so people are, the town's getting a really bad name for itself for suddenly intruding on all this property when most of that intrusion is already there, because it doesn't matter whether we pass the zoning law or not. Wetlands are protected by the DEC or the federal government and you can't build on top of them. Unless you get a permit, which you can do, but it's really, really hard. Um, so uh I had some suggestions of how maybe to make that more clear. Um, in doing so, some important, an important thing came up that I think we should all be clear on and discuss. So um at any rate, one proposal would be to A, just leave things the way they are and say, look, we've we've, you know, it does lay out that wetlands and flood zones and riparian zones are different things. Some fraction of the town does not yet understand that, but they will at some point, so let's just leave it the way it is. Um, or to try to help simplify this or clarify this, make it more obvious. Um, I thought what I had was a brilliant idea, but maybe it's not so brilliant, which is we don't have to put all these three different things in one map. We could have a map of wetlands, a map of repair and buffer area, a map of the flood zones, three different overlay districts, three different overlay maps. And that would clarify not only what was what where, but then it could be very clear which regulations applied to which. Um, and I think that effectively we could write the different subsections so that the regulations do not change from what we have in the current zoning law. Because I think really a lot of the problem is confusion, not necessarily objection to what's being done, but there is some of that too. So we'll get to that in a minute. Um, so the key point that we should discuss at some point is for the flood zones in particular. So wetlands, as I said, are effectively a no build zone because either DEC or federal government says, you know, you gotta go through us to get there. And they don't make that easy. The riparian zone, we have this, we have said in the zoning law, you can't do much there. Nothing within the first 50 feet and only a little bit more than the next 50 feet out. So that's pretty clear. Flood zones, the town has a town law that, um, does not protect water quality. What it does is protect a building from being damaged by a flood. And to some extent tries to minimize adding to the flooding problem by putting a lot of impervious services in place and that sort of thing. But what I learned more thoroughly from Nan is, is, and I, and I even wrote this line, you know, elsewhere is that one of the purposes of the overlay district is to basically encourage slash force building to take place outside of the overlay district. And only when that is not feasible or reasonable for a particular parcel can allowances be made to allow intrusion into the overlay zone. So despite the town's law saying you could build in a flood zone, just got to build it well. Um, the effect of having that as in, in the overlay zone is to try to encourage people not to build in the flood zone. And we, I think should face squarely, is that our intention? Um, because if so, then an overlay district for that makes a lot of sense. Uh, because it would trigger ASPR and all that kind of stuff. Okay. So, so we could separate them into different layers that way to make it more clear what's what. Or we could say, you know, the town law on flood zones is good enough and state and federal law is good enough. We really don't need to put that in the zoning law at all. Let's just have the riparian buffer overlay. Because that's what we think needs to be done. So that's another option. Is to just have, reduce the overlay district to that. That would change some of the protections that we have now put in place that were primarily affecting the flood district area. So that's an array of proposals for, for that. The two other things I want to mention now, and then we'll see what we want to talk about is indeed, we heard comment about, you know, I'm right next to the creek. Suddenly I can't do stuff with my property because of this repairing buffer overlay. And it is certainly true historically in a lot of the hamlets, houses are put right close to the stream. So the overlay district does have a significant impact, particularly in hamlets, particularly in Brookton Dale and Sliderville Springs on parcels of land. So, and particularly the buildings that already exist on many of those parcels of land. So one possibility would be to shrink the width of the buffer as much as we think is the right balance between allowing use of property and not over encumbering buildings, but yet still providing protection and some improvement on, on water quality and, and, and stuff for streams. So the width of the repair and buffer could be shrunk everywhere. Uniform, applied everywhere. Let's be fair. It could be shrunk only in the hamlet districts on the assumption that those have smaller lot sizes. So maybe it's more of a burden for those. And so there's a rationale for doing it there, but not in the agro zone. Or maybe it should be focused just on the two key hamlets of Brookton Dale and Sliderville Springs, because that's where a lot of the key water resources of Six Mile Creek is. I will point out, if you do all the hamlets, that's pretty much all of Six Mile Creek um, in the town. And so that, you know, uh, would have at least a smaller buffer for the entire of Six Mile Creek. So that's one possibility. When I brought this idea up with Nan, um, you know, she and Rick talked about it, thought about it some, and, and they did think that maybe a 50 foot wide buffer would be adequate. Um, and so they came up with some, a new proposal for, uh, parameters for the mapping of the overlay and the width of the buffer. And in that would be a change from what we currently have is a two-part buffer to simply a one-part buffer with one set of rules for the entire buffer. Last thing is there was a comment, uh, I think it was Mr. DeBoer in particular that made it that, boy, it's kind of unfair that I'm just inside this overlay and someone just outside of it has nothing happened to them and I get all this happening to me. And the only sort of way around that is to sort of grade the restrictions as you get further from a stream. Uh, we do that somewhat by having our two-part boundary, the inner zone that's most protected and the next 50 feet that's somewhat less. But, um, we could make that yet a softer boundary by adding even more uses in that outer 50 feet. Or, uh, the DEC actually recommends a, a three-part buffer. This is getting more complicated, but that's something I want to put on the table. So these are all my ideas I threw on the table. I do not support all of these ideas, but I think they all merit some discussion to try to figure out what might make the most sense for the town. So that is my, my not quite two second by my quick summation. I would recommend maybe we take on the idea of should we or should we not split up the overlay district as one unit? And then maybe think secondarily about the buffer with, um, and or changing how the buffer grades it to nothingness, uh, is a separate issue.
Barb, um, I would like to make a motion and if it receives a second, um, I'd like to then speak to that motion.
Okay.
Um, my motion is to, um, uh, create a map which would constitute the water resources and flooding overlay that would sh- show the three types of, um, data that go into the overlay, the, the, the wetlands, the flooding and the, um, the riparian zone. So overlay stays as it is, same dimensions. Um, you know, same dimensions for the buffer, characteristics of the overlay are the same. But the overlay map, whether it's one or three, um, shows, uh, what, what parts of the water resources overlay exists because they're wetlands, what parts exist because they're flooding overlay, flooding district and what, uh, parts exist in the overlay because of riparian. So if there's a second to that, um, and, and that goes with not making any other changes, um, to the current, you know, uh, regulation standards for, for the overlay. Uh, if there's a second, I'd like to talk, speak to that motion.
Um, Michelle, I saw your hand up.
Uh, I have a question first. Um, I guess, uh, a question slash comment. One thing I didn't realize, uh, Bill, with your, um, comments was the idea of making actually a map for each one of these, uh, rather than one, I think it's been said that having one map with all of the, uh, different parameters identified would be really complicated and hard to look at. But it makes sense to me if you had a map for each one that then you could compare. And so Barb, if that's kind of what you're talking about, I'm happy to second your motion. I guess my question is, what are you talking about exactly?
Yes, so to, so to clarify, and again, depending on the scale of mapping and all of that and the resolution of the map, there would be one overlay, but it could be illustrated with three maps that, that demonstrate, you know, the three different sources of data, or it could be one map, but that might be complicated and not have high resolution to it.
Okay, so I hear a second then because.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
So then Barb, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, and so my, my comment is that, um, uh, that I think having the three types of data, types of water resources that go into this overlay will do a lot more, uh, for the town of Caroline residents to understand why, uh, certain properties are in the overlay, um. And it will help the town board as they move forward with deliberating what they think is an appropriate overlay. Um, and, um, I don't think that we should do anything more with, um, making all the various changes that we could about going to 50 feet or 100 feet or under 50 feet or whatever. Um, because we have talked about this a lot in a very informed way and there are many different options. There's no right or wrong on this. There are many, many options that the water resources overlay can, can look like. And, um, I think we pass this information onto the board and given their wisdom on what goals are, uh, you know, are appropriate for the town. They can make the final decisions as to what to move forward in terms of, um, the different regulations and the different sizes that are within those, uh, within the, if the overlay.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to this? I see Bill's hand up.
Yeah, so, um, what I would say is, and in here basically I'm going to ask in, in a moment for, for, for Nan to give her, um, thoughts. That I think, you know, we, we do know, I mean, Rick can make a nice high resolution map. So when you look at it on a nine by seven piece of paper, these districts would all be, you couldn't see a damn thing, but it's a good enough resolution that if you have an electronic version, you can zoom in. Or the town prints a nice, you know, two by three foot one, people could see what's going on. So I think that we can handle that. But I still think what might make the most sense, and I'm not sure Barbara, this is exactly what you're thinking about. And this is the question for Nan, is this appropriate in a zoning document? That there be an overlay map that defines the water resources and flooding overlay district that's essentially exactly the map we've got now. And then it has to be an appendix, but ideally it's right there as the next couple sheets of the zoning document. There is a map of the wetlands used to generate that. There is a second map of the flood zones used to generate that. And there's a third map of the riparian buffer areas used to generate that. So that people could flip essentially back and forth to see what it is, or what they're more likely to do is say, oh, zoom in on my parcel. Oh, I now see on my parcel, this part's a wetland. Oh, let me look at the flood zone map. Oh, I see, you know, so I think it might give them that information. But I do think that they're all put on one map. It will be a bit mucky and confusing, though the stippling shading and slashing that Rick came up with for that example that we used in the white paper on the overlay district does work pretty well. And so possibly, um, using that could be used as a single map, but you will never be able to tell anything until you really zoom in. So the question for you Nan is, is that sort of like, here's the official zoning map, but we have these other three maps that sort of help people figure out what's going on? How would you include that in a zoning document?
Yeah, that, that's often done. So the overlay map would be the official overlay district. And that could be followed by the three maps that would be clearly labeled for informational purposes only. Um, so that there's oftentimes information maps that are added that are not the regulatory map. So that could be done if you felt that that was the most effective way to convey it. Um, you know, if you have, uh, you know, I think that you're right. If you make this big enough, I think you'll be able to see all of those items, but in a printed version of that, that, you know, putting all three of those separately, you wouldn't be able to tell one from the other. It would only be able to be viewed well on a large scale map. Um, you know, the, the idea of having each layer as its own overlay that you mentioned, some communities do that. They have a floodplain overlay with its map. They have a wetlands overlay with its map, and then they have a riparian zone with its map. So uh, like, you know, what Barb said, there's not necessarily a right or a wrong way. I think if you should choose the way that's going to be the most clear and the most understandable. Um, so folks understand. So yes, we can definitely add in um, information maps. We could definitely separate out the three, um, major items, um. You know, but remember that the flood, the overlay, uh, you know, also included perennial streams and, you know, the USGS data and it is a little more, we, we just wanted to say wetlands, floodplain and the riparian zone. Um, sure, we, whatever way works for you, um, we can make that work.
Okay, let me come back to, uh, to Barbara since you made this. What do you think?
I made the motion and I think, um, the, you know, I, what I said was the overlay boundaries stay the way they are.
Uh huh.
Um, but we have a clear way of indicating what folds up into that, what's wetlands, what's riparian and what is flooding.
Right.
And I think that's what Nan just addressed.
Great.
That's a question?
Yep.
What does the watershed overlay, how does the ocean watershed overlay affect the agro compared to the other? Does it really affect it at all, doesn't it?
Um, sure it does. Either, I mean, it, it, it shows you where you might not be able to build because it's a wetland.
Yeah, well, that there, but I mean, as far as the riparian, but it doesn't, does not affect the agro, does it?
Well, sure, there's, there's, yeah, water resource overlay along, along streams and rivers.
Every, every stream.
Every stream.
Every stream, every river.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we could change that. Now, that was one of the things that Bill had, had brought up was that we could say, all right, riparian, uh, uh, areas can be smaller in the hamlets or in these if we're in the.
Yeah.
Brookton Dale.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to, uh, I think Bill was first and then Michelle.
Um, yeah, thanks. And just, because again, these were thoughts I, I meant to voice and I forgot. So, um, you know, no matter what I, I, I have said all along, you know, I sort of liked a map that's sort of a one-stop shop that where everyone can find all the information they need to know about what, where they can or cannot build and, and what the consequences might be in one place. Because again, we, it is possible to find out where wetlands are by going to the county or the DEC. And it's possible to find out where flood zones are, the county maps those too. But I'm not sure it always happens and I'm not sure it's easy for residents. So as long as all that information is there in the zoning law, I'm going to be happy. So I think we should maintain representing everything, all the water resources in the zoning law. Um, and Barb's suggestion does that. That's great. I think Barb and or Michelle suggested the following, and, and I am in support of this as well, be the proposal I would make, which is other decisions, like we should shrink the size of the riparian buffer in the hamlet zones or everywhere shade over into all a quasi-political, so they're, they're policy choices. We couldn't, we can make policy choices, but maybe that level of policy choice is more appropriate for the town board where they are weighing, uh, in some sense really, I think decreasing the amount of protection in favor of individual liberty, if you want to put it that way. So I think that, that, that I'm fine with us maybe giving a set of suggestions to town board about here's how you might want to change the width of the riparian buffer um, without making that decision ourselves. Or if you want to go there, fine. But I think that, that's a good, I, I think it's fine to pass that off onto them. But I certainly think we should decide what to do about one overlay, three overlays, map, no maps, how many maps?
Okay. Michelle?
Uh, I guess I'll just agree with, uh, what Bill said. I don't, I don't think we should, uh, make new decisions about, you know, shrinking, uh, the buffer or whatever. I think just get enough maps so it's clear and presented to the board so that they can start, uh, making these decisions.
Okay, then I'm going to repeat what the motion was, which is that Barb moved to create, to have created for us a map with three layers that show the three types of data, wetlands, flooding and riparian zone and leave the other, uh, issues, um, as they are. Yeah.
And, and, and Bob, is that, I mean, did you come to a conclusion? Is that a single map or several individual maps? Or you want to leave it to Nan or Rick's judgment? I wasn't clear on that part.
Um, what I'm hearing from Nan might make the most sense is to have one map of the overlay supported by three other maps that are appendices to the law or whatever is the, the appropriate terminology that would show riparian flooding and wetlands separately.
As for information only apps, sort of.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, with that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 I'm, Michelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Ernie and Bruce?
I'm thinking.
Okay, you're all right to think.
I think, I, I think I would be inspired on that.
She's an aye and Bruce?
Yeah.
You're an aye too. Okay, so that passes unanimously. Okay. So with that, I think the other things that Bill outlined about what we could change or not change are somewhat moot. Now.
Uh, no, uh, because the width of the riparian buffer, uh, is something we could still change.
No, not, I think, I think that.
Oh, I say, oh, I'm sorry. Barb said to keep it the same. I'm sorry. You're right. I would like to discuss, however, if not this meeting and next meeting, are there options we'd like to present the town board? Given the wisdom that we have generated in our experience of things they should consider about that buffer.
Yes, and I would very much like people to write to me their wisdom by Thursday. Because then I would like to have something that I could, that we could discuss next week. So send me your wisdom. I respond as the Easter bunny and if it's very good, you get an Easter egg. Okay.
Okay, so I, I would include in that the width of the buffer and whether one would change regulations in an inner or outer buffer or change to a many-layered buffer. I mean, a- all those I think are on the table. Uh, some are crazier than others.
Well, it's a many-splendored buffer. That's what I, I'm, I'm hearing here. Okay. Um, and that's including the. Um, and that's including the soft in the edge idea, et cetera. Okay, then we have the focus, focus commercial district, which I think Bill is sort of what you were referring to at first.
That's what he just did. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that was a Thursday thing. Then we have the use table. So I'm going to go through that. Change artist studio, but we've already done that. Bakery with SPR. So let's go to our use tables so that we know what we're discussing.
Yeah, so the bakery uh, with SPR is currently allowed in Slaterville Springs, Caroline Center, Caroline and Speedsville, Hamlet, Brooktondale, uh, Center, Brooktondale and Focus Commercial. And I move that um, the bakery be added with SPR to um, the remaining three districts, Ag Rural, Beesmer and West Slaterville.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason for doing that, just, just briefly, is to respond to some of the comments we're hearing about um, having um, uh, more types of businesses in various districts and more things for people to do, like go shop at a bakery.
Okay. So uh, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
And Ernie, any discussion?
Well, I finally have my use table up, so I think the motion was to add it to Beesmer and where?
West Slaterville and Ag Rural.
So just make it SPR.
So make all of them SPR. All districts would be bakery SPR.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, hearing no other, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Hi, okay, that, that seems forecast. Ernie?
But, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes, okay.
The bakeries, I got nothing against bakeries.
Commercial kitchen.
And, and I remind people, you know, again, to some extent, we've set scale by the commercial building size.
Yes.
So, you know, it's not like, I don't know, Pop and Fresh is going to move, necessarily move in and do a hundred thousand square foot trucking station, you know.
Okay, the next one would be commercial kitchen with SPR, which is on the next page over. Um, anyone want to say why they put that in there?
Yes, um, most of these are mine, Jean. So a commercial kitchen, kitchen with SPR um, currently is not allowed in West Slaterville, Beesmer and if not part of a farm, farm operation in Ag Rural. And so my motion would be to add it to Ag Rural, if not part of farm operation um, to Beesmer and to West Slaterville. So again, across the board, the um, you know, in Ag Rural, it's P, meaning permitted uh, with a- a- as part of a farm operation only. And the change would be for Ag Rural to SPR if not part of a farm operation.
Okay. And then SPR all the way across?
Yes.
Okay, who would like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, I know I should know this because we talked about it before, but me a feeble brain, I, describe a commercial kitchen. What we're talking about.
Can I go to the definition?
Yeah.
And I know we had this discussion like a year and a half ago. I, I really do know we had the discussion.
It's something like, um, consider the kitchen in the Brooktondale Community Center.
Okay, I'll read the definition.
Okay.
Uh, commercial kitchen, a fully equipped food preparation facility that provides kitchen space and that is rented out for shared use. A commercial kitchen is also known as a shared kitchen or kitchen incubator.
Okay. So, you know, and, and only I want to add to my discussion, which is great, thank you. Um, just, I am potentially next meeting going to propose substantially increasing the size of, of commercial upbuilding footprints allowed in the Ag Rural. So uh, that may go up or down at the, at the next meeting, but um, that's what I'm having in the back of my mind is, well, geez, if we let the scale of the building grow a lot, is that going to affect this? But I like commercial kitchen ag rural, I'm, I'm fine.
They're also now known as ghost kitchens a lot. We're rest, you do restaurant pop ups in them. So uh, with that, all in favor of that, say aye.
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 Okay, that is unanimous. Okay, uh, convenience store with SPR add to Beesmer and West Slaterville. So convenience stores would be currently allowed.
So, so their convenience stores are currently SPR in all districts except West Slaterville, Beesmer, Beesmer and Ag Rural. And I'm suggesting add them with SPR to Beesmer and West Slaterville.
To the two hamlets.
Yeah, Beesmer and West Slaterville.
Okay.
Increasing commercial activity throughout the Route 79.
Correct.
So I will second that.
Okay, Barb and Bill, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Industrial light use with SUP.
Uh, yeah, so currently industrial light use with SUP is allowed in all districts except Beesmer and West Slaterville, and I'm proposing adding them uh, to Beesmer and West Slaterville.
Okay. I'll second that.
Industrial light use with SUP currently allowed in all districts except Beesmer and West Slaterville. This motion would change that so it's allowed in all districts with SUP.
Okay, no, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, offices with SPR.
Offices with SPR currently are allowed in all districts except West Slaterville, Beesmer and Ag Rural. And I propose adding offices with SPR to West Slaterville and Beesmer.
Everything except.
Everything except Ag Rural.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Barb and Bill? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that's unanimous. And outdoor recreation facility, commercial with SUP.
Which will be changed to commercial recreation facility, comma, outdoor. Um, is currently allowed with SUP in focus commercial Slaterville Springs and Ag Rural. And I suggest adding it to um, all districts except for uh, Center Brooktondale. So it would add uh, with SUP to Beesmer, West Slaterville, Caroline Center, Caroline, Speedsville and Brooktondale, but not Center Brooktondale.
Okay, so. So, and you were changing the name of it?
Well, we, we changed the definition, we changed that because the definition had a different name, a different order of what was common.
Okay.
This, this, this is commercial outdoor or is it both?
No, this is, this is outdoor, this is commercial recreation facility outdoor. And let me, if you need to, I can, I can, yeah, let me, let me find that. Um, because it would be under, uh, outdoor, I believe, currently. No, it's under a commercial, I think it's under commercial. Yeah, I think currently, yeah, okay. So a commercial recreation facility outdoor. A commercial use designed and equipped principally for the conduct of outdoor sports and leisure time activities, not limited to ball fields, tennis and racket courts, swimming, bike trails, hiking, playing fields, batting cages, driving ranges and similar outdoor activities conducted on a commercial or fee basis. An outdoor recreational court or athletic field, nature and ecology, recreation area, community garden, picnic area and similar uses or additional forms of a commercial recreational facility. Okay, and my reason for doing so is uh, partially at least in response to some of the comments we heard at the public hearing, um, pointing out that there are a few things for youth to do in Caroline.
Yep.
Uh, Tim has his hand up.
Sorry, Tim, I didn't see you.
Listen, I'm sorry, Barbara, I was just wondering if you could clarify for the definition, whether that would include, for example, motorized recreation such as go-karts or motocross or?
Yeah, that's not, that's not, that's not currently named in the definition and with SUP, uh, what this would require um, things like um, noise um, or fumes or whatever associated with the use would be considered when this is proposed. And so a special use permit would be required. And so if that use is not appropriate for where it's being proposed because of noise or other conditions, then it would not be approved or it would be suggested it be cited elsewhere.
That would also deal with hours of use.
Hours of use, yes. Anything associated with the use and whether it's appropriate for that area uh, would be considered in a special use permit. Nan and Bill have their.
Okay, uh, I told Bill and then Nan.
Okay, so uh, and I'm, I'm running the implicit fact that there was an implicit second to this. I think we're talking about this option. And the point Tim brought up, and I think Nan's going to speak to, is exactly what I would want to make sure we were all on the same page about, which is um, the strength or not of, of the SUP process. Um, yeah, I think that, for example, it could limit uh, hours of operation. So let's say there's a noisy whatever, you know, horses galping around a track, I don't know. So whatever that makes a lot of noise, you could just, the SUP could certainly say you have to operate during these hours, give people quiet time overnight, right? Or it could say, yeah, you can't exceed X amount of decibels. And we have the noise standard says basically at the property boundary, it's got to be sort of like ambient level, not too much worse. So are we confident that the standards we have um, in Article seven are, are strong enough to indeed protect the neighborhood? Um, is I guess what I'm asking. I think so, but I'm not positive, and I'm hoping that that's part of what Nan's gonna you know, talk about what, what SUP can and can't be used for.
Okay, Nan?
Yes, that, that was what I was going to bring up is that, that I just wanted to remind everyone that implicit in the being called a special use permit is that it is a permitted use. And so there, there, that's a high bar to overcome when you say that all of those things are permitted uses and yes, you certainly would be able to control those, but that doesn't get at whether those ultimately are still appropriate uses for all of those hamlet areas. You know, those are uh, mini go-kart areas, racetracks, um, you know, motocross um, kind of things, they happen um, in many, many places. So I just would urge you to think, you know, maybe you need to change the definition, maybe you need to pull them out so that they're clearly not considered a commercial outdoor recreation facility. And you can handle it that way, but I would, I would urge caution on that one.
Hey, Barb?
Um, I'd like to amend my own motion uh, by amending the definition to include a sentence that's uh, or to include a clause that defines a commercial use uh, as a non-motorized activity uh, designed and equipped principally blah, blah, blah. The commercial use uh, is a non-motorized activity uh, would be, so a non-motorized activity would be inserted into the definition as the fourth word and so on.
Okay.
My electronic go-kart.
Okay, so Bill, do you accept that as an amendment?
Oh, well, I don't have to accept it because Barb is, Barb's amending her own, and actually Barb, that was the amendment I was going to ask if you'd accept as friendly. Uh, but I do think we can ponder between now and next meeting whether we want to then add some other line, sorry, Ernie, that is for motorized outdoor recreation, but um, I'm not wanting to go there tonight because I wouldn't think it through clearly enough. And but anyway, we could, if people object to the non-motorized use here, we could then perhaps think about adding a motorized or otherwise power-driven outdoor rec category and maybe restricted to, to a different set of areas. That's how I would handle that one. I, I like the, the modified motion. I will speak to the motion in that sense.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor uh, of the modified motion to add um SUP and uh, commercial outdoor recreation to the aforementioned four areas and add a non-motorized activity to the definition, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we're adding it to all, which one?
Uh, to Beesmer, uh, the group of Caroline Center, Caroline and Speedsville, West Slaterville and Brooktondale, but not, not Center.
Not Center Brooktondale.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that's, that is unanimous. Thank you. Um, and we will think about the other later. Okay, school private with SPR.
School private with SPR is currently um, allowed in uh, Slaterville Springs, Caroline, Caroline Center and Speedsville, Brooktondale, Center Brooktondale and Focus Commercial. And I suggest I make a motion to add it to both Beesmer and West Slaterville.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, staging, storage or parking areas as non-residential, non-hazardal, commercial use for vehicles, equipment or materials, whether temporary or permanent, not associated with a home occupation or otherwise permitted use with SUP, add to Slaterville Springs, Caroline Center, Caroline, Caroline Center and Speedsville. And you mentioned that we need a definition for this before and we agreed to that. So um.
So we could hold off on this until we have a definition and then vote on it next week if you like.
Um, do you want to do that?
So you're thinking why we don't allow this? The Ag Rural is?
It, it is. It's, it's allowed with SUP and Ag Rural and SPR in focus commercial currently.
And you're suggesting to?
And I was suggesting to add it to Slaterville Springs, Caroline, Caroline Center and Speedville. But I'm fine waiting if we want to hold off until there's a formal definition of it.
Bruce?
I think maybe motion, or should I wait next time to go over this?
Yeah, on this particular thing?
Uh, different, a couple days.
Uh, let me finish this list and then we'll come to you. Um, so let's move this one.
I, I had one question that may help inform that definition. I just, is, and I just, this thoughts from the zoning commission, you know, is there any reason, thinking or desire to think differently about either a covered storage or maybe the SUP gets at that? I mean, it's one thing indeed, probably in say, oh, you know, the Ag Rural Zone, you want to use a big lot for storing stuff, fine. But if you're right on the edge of a bunch of houses, maybe it wouldn't be appropriate to have a huge parking for a bunch of big vehicles. But hey, having a shed in which a bunch of conduit, et cetera, is stored, that's, that's okay. So I, you know, yeah, it may hinge on the definition for me, but I do want to hear people's thoughts on would we maybe want to differentiate on sort of indoor versus outdoor storage or shielded versus unshielded storage? Uh, uh, thinking that maybe some of that is more appropriate for a hamlet um, or not. So is there any?
I'm going to ask Nan as you're writing that, would you try to divide that into two things?
Sure.
Great. Good. So we'll do that next week and thank you, Bill. And uh, and then the next to last one is add a line for farm-to-table restaurant and make that use allowed in the Ag Rural District.
So, so this was mine. So I'll just, you know, I mean, I think it's sort of obvious, uh, maybe where, where I'm going with this. But so, you know, we allow um, a, a, basically a, a, you know, a food service thing if it's associated with a farm operation in the Ag Rural District. And I think that's good. Um, you know, I don't know if everybody here has been to Elderberry Pond up north of one of the lakes. It's kind of pricey, but you know, they are a restaurant on a farm. They, they sell stuff they grow themselves. That's, that's wonderful. Um, but in um, not everyone can, can, you know, grow all their own food or has a lot big enough to do that to support a restaurant. So I'm wondering though, is a way of supporting agricultural activity in, you know, Caroline, Tompkins County, the Finger Lakes area, if we want to do something that would encourage um, a farm-to-table restaurant. Now, we have food and beverage allowed. Now, we have food and beverage allowed in a bunch of the hamlet districts, got it? But if you wanted to turn an old farmhouse into a quaint thing that really tried to support farms, you couldn't do it under our zoning law. So I am, you know, proposing that we add, either have a way to add to the existing food and beverage line in the ag zone to make it clear, or add a separate line for front table restaurant that allows a front table restaurant in the agricultural rural zone. That's my proposal.
And how would you define farm to table?
Well, we ought to probably look that up. I will admit I don't have a definition, so we may have to hold that one off too. But basically, my thinking is it's a restaurant that is serving a majority, a bulk, a vast fraction of what it is serving is man, is, is grown, produced, whatever, within some reasonably close distance. And those are all, you know, so again, that's drawing from the Finger Lakes, ideally Caroline and Tompkins County, but certainly the Finger Lakes. Um, and I don't expect the salt necessarily to come out of Cargill. So I understand, you know, some things may come from a distance, but that, that a front table restaurant, and I'm sure there's formal definitions out there, is generally drawing, you know, produce from a nearby area.
Thank you. Michelle?
Uh, I guess my comment would be, uh, that just seems really difficult and com- complicated to enforce to me. I mean, they can call themselves that, but how do you know that that's, that's what's happening?
Well, right now we have, uh, food and beverage allowed with ASPR as part of a farm operation only, which is slightly different than this because you would not have to be growing this as having a, a food to, I, I think, um, actually, Michelle, the, the whole farm-to-table thing is pretty common now. So I think you could come up with a definition of it.
But how can you exist as a business in a, in a, in a big climate that doesn't allow you to grow anything from October to May?
People, uh, actually, people do this by growing under glass.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, and they also do it because of, of meat.
Of us making up rules for things that don't really exist yet.
No, well, Ernie, I mean, not that far away. I've gone to it. There's a front table restaurant. They survived. They shut down, I, perhaps in the winter. I'm not positive about that, but I, you know, it, it's not that I'm making up. They, they exist. And then what I'm worried about is that it's a nice thing that could really be a good business for Caroline. So all those who are saying we ought to make sure we are making a climate suitable for business growth, this is a business that could be here. So that's why I put it out there, but I get you, you know.
There are a lot of potatoes.
So I, I have a suggestion for this, which is to add to the ag rural district as part of farm operation or as farm-to-table, and then we make a definition for farm-to-table. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll take that as a friendly amendment. Fine.
Okay, so let's put this off till next week and we see the definition. Michelle?
Yeah, I just want to comment. Isn't that, uh, restaurant cultivare? Uh, isn't that a farm-to-table? And don't they, don't they grow their own stuff? Uh, isn't it part of TC3?
Yes. Yeah, that's a, that's a farm-to-table restaurant in town.
And so that's an example of a place that survives in Ithaca in this climate, right?
Right, and they serve mo- they serve generally.
By Bruce's definition is the question.
And they, and they serve mostly Finger Lakes wines. That's the other way.
It says their stuff's locally sourced, so I just looked it up.
Yeah, it is. Uh, okay, so we're gonna put that off till next week with that, uh, amendment that Nan is gonna write definition just because there's, she just loves that. And, uh, is there anything else in this? Review multifamily lines and confirm or change the required level of review. So.
Again, mine, um, this is responding to, uh, comments, a particular comment by one particular individual in town who've been very insistent about this matter, that we are being overly restrictive of multifamily housing. And of course, we made the change that four and under does not, i- is permitted by right and larger things are not. Um, and so I'm putting it on the table for discussion. I personally do not favor changing anything.
Uh, I have the same reaction because I think that we discussed in great detail how Boysville, for instance, um, could be built, that we felt that it could be built under the restrictions that we were putting into this. And we had that discussion for exactly that reason. So, um, let's look at where that is. In the law. And remember, I'll come to you because that will be the last one on this particular part of the list.
Well, and I, I will repeat in defense of this individual that his statement is that uh, the SUP requirement is a significant barrier and would be a detriment and act to discourage such, such housing. Um, I, I feel that beca- large commercial enterprises like this are appropriate to have SUP, but you know, that's, those are the two sides of the coin.
Okay, so, um, we are looking at in the use table.
Yes, first page of the use table.
Okay, so let's go to the first page of the news table and look at multifamily dwelling units. So, um, Bill, you want to go through these?
Uh, yeah, I, I had to get there. I'm almost there, almost there. Uh, let's see. Yeah, well, I'm just, okay, there we go. So we currently have two lines that, uh, treat multifamily dwellings. There's the multi-dwelling four units or less, which is permitted by right in all zoning districts. So it's Ps across the board. Um, larger, that is multi-dwelling with five or more units and also a multifamily development, uh, which I think is defined in, in the definitions, um, is, uh, SUP in all zoning districts requires a special use permit. Um, and that's what it says currently. And again, I, I feel that's the appropriate level of review and, and division on those things.
Okay, so let's, um, anyone else want to comment on this area? Michelle?
Uh, just, I, I agree with Bill.
Um, the other thing that, um, Bruno mentioned in this regard is that we should essentially only just take the, um, the part of, the part of the law that currently exists, which is for, um, developments and just use that. So let's bring that into the discussion. Is, and, and that is essentially what I thought he was saying.
Well, he was saying, he was saying, no, that we could just change our subdivision laws and take care of everything.
Correct.
Right.
That, that was his point. And I think that what he was speaking to was really kind of the lot size law. I, I mean, I, I didn't talk to him about this, so I don't know specifically what he was addressing, but after I thought about it, I said, well, what are we talking about here? We can't, you know, the only thing that really applies in the subdivision law is, you know, the minimum acreage size, you know, and so if we up that to three instead of one, then, you know, that we could dispense with zoning somehow. But I, I, I couldn't really follow that argument. Say, may I have a better idea?
No, I, I think that's exactly what he was proposing. And it just, um, you know, ignores the fact that zoning is the only way to specify that certain uses are allowed in certain areas of the town and certain uses are not allowed in other areas of the town. That was the whole point of the Task Force on Land Use and Economic Development, um, suggesting that the town pursue zoning, uh, was to, to achieve that goal.
Okay, Bill?
I, and I guess what I'll add is, you know, and I don't know exactly what, you know, Mr. Schickel was, was wanting. He sort of said you could take a couple important things from the zoning law and put them in your subdivision law. You'd have something that did a couple of good things, but wasn't overreach. Okay, that, that's the gist, I think, of where he is coming from. And, um, you know, I disagree for a few reasons. One is what Barb just pointed out, that there were certain other goals that, I mean, I think the point is that Mr. Schickel doesn't share those goals. I get it. But, you know, there was a lot of discontent over forming the businesses to be able to locate wherever they want. And you can't really address that issue without zoning. And that was a clear community sentiment on that. Um, any other use here, but not there, takes zoning. But even some of the things, I think stuff he might support on some of the dimensional requirements, you can't do just in a subdivision law. You really have to have a zoning law um, in order to specify things like building can't be bigger than X or has to be so far off the road. So even some things that he might think were reasonable for Caroline, you can't do without the power of zoning. So you know, I, I don't know what all he meant, but I think he might have been missing, um, that legal, uh, requirement for being able to do some of the things that, that perhaps he was willing to, to do in subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Nan?
Um, yeah, I just, I, I guess building on what Bill said is that a development like Voiceville cottages is not a subdivision. Each one of those buildings is not on a separate lot. It's one parcel. So the subdivision law would never even come into play for something like that. It's just not relevant to that kind of development. So I, I totally agree with Bill that when you get into kind of, you know, dimensions and uses, that's what zoning is. Subdivision only looks at the splitting of parcels. So unless, unless they were creating um, a, a, a higher density major subdivision that would have lots of lots and lots of buildings, you know, that are, you know, you take one parcel and split it up into fifty ways, sure, that's a subdivision, but Voiceville cottages was, is not a subdivision.
Okay, so I think the intent of having this on the agenda was do, should we change this? And I don't hear anyone saying that we should change what's in those two lines. Okay, um, Bruce, you said you had some things along this line in the use table.
Yeah, I was wondering about banks. Uh, it's just the R everywhere. Except for ag rural, Hamlet, Beesmer and Hamlet, West Sladeville. I was thinking we should maybe add it to Hamlet, Beesmer and Hamlet, Sladeville, not ag rural district, SPR.
Okay. So you're, Bruce is making that motion. Does anyone want to second that?
No, second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I didn't hear, Bruce, can you clarify again where you want to?
I wanted to make it SPR for a bank in Hamlet, Beesmer and Hamlet, West Sladeville.
Okay, gotcha.
This is in response to adding more commercial possibilities along Route 79 Court.
Right.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Yep, and actually would be camp, ground camping units.
Uh huh.
Okay, well, well, that's, I, so, I didn't get a second, but I had to vote on that.
Yeah, we just moved along. Okay, so that was Bruce and Barb. All in favor? Say aye about banks.
Aye.
Right?
Anyone opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't see your hand up.
It might be old.
Yeah, that was old, sorry. But I, oh, no, I do have a question, but you've already voted, so I'll just ask my question. Um, is there an issue with a drive-through with banks in, um, these, these new hamlets? I mean, is that something to consider?
Well, SPR would be about site plan review. So you could talk about that in site plan review, right? Okay.
Uh, so, and that, so I think that, and we do maybe have something specifically about drive-through. I'm trying to remember in the design standards, but Nan, let's say the, um, review board said, we don't like the fact that you've got a drive-through. Can they say no drive-through? Unless we say it somewhere else explicitly, can they say your site's fine, except delete the site, the, 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 the drive-through?
Why would we be deleting the drive-through?
Well, this is, Michelle raised the question, is there a problem with the drive-through there? And I'm not saying that there is, but let's say it was felt that that would have too much traffic, maybe because it was being located right next to the elementary school, or I don't know, if, if Beesmer ever grew that far. I'm just hypothetical.
It'd be a traffic congestion issue.
Right. And so I have a hypothetical question to Nan, which is the limits of site plan a, ability. Can you strike part of a site plan through, through site plan review? I'm not saying we'd want to, but I'm just.
Yeah. Um, that you might be able to, if you, but you would have to go through, um, you would.
You would request a traffic study and you.
Yeah, you would, you would have to have a foundation upon which to prove that it wouldn't work.
Okay.
Um, you know, site plan again is, is kind of blind to the use.
That's what I thought.
It, it really is looking at how things on the ground function. And our definition doesn't say anything about a drive-through, so, um.
Or have something about drive-throughs.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I can find quickly about drive-throughs is under the supplementary standards, section six point two point six canopies. And item A says, "Drive-through or drive-under canopy shall draw on the design traditions of the town of Caroline."
So that's what they look.
Okay. I think the old site plan law had something about like drive-throughs, but it was, I think it may have just been a trigger, so never mind. Anyway, thanks, Nan. That, that was helpful.
Bill, that was a trigger.
We voted on it.
Yeah, we did. Um.
I just asked whether banks will be required to have a certain distance away from the bank.
But. Yes.
The same as everybody else, Tim.
Okay.
Except, except you. We're, we have a special that you can put your house wherever you want to, however close to a wetland, in a wetland, on a stream, you know, that. I think you should have that authority, Tim.
Some district, right? He has his own district.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Bruce, do you have others?
Yeah, two more. Uh, campground, camping units.
Okay.
We've got SUP and ag rural district, access across the board. Should we possibly have it? I would make a motion, we put it in focus, focus commercial also with SUP.
Interesting idea. Um, anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, I'd like someone to explain that to me. How does that work in a focus commercial area?
Well, I mean, right now our focus commercial isn't, I mean, yes, say, uh, celebrations wanted to put a little campground on the back corner of their property, right? I mean, they could do that. A fair amount of our focus commercial is fairly rural right now, so it certainly could fly. And if it didn't fly, that, you know, why prevent them from trying? So anyway, that's what I'd say.
Uh, I, actually, I think Celebrations has had camping. I think I've heard him talk about it.
Okay, um, uh, any other questions? All in favor of that idea of adding SUP to the focus commercial for campground, uh, camping units? Say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Was, was that seconded?
I seconded it.
Okay. And let me number this because I'm trying to number all of my resolutions, so I'll know where the hell I am. Okay, and there was one more, Bruce.
Two more. This one, I'm not a pause about that, but I'm looking at it and thinking, I think we discussed this pretty heavily about car wash. We get SUP everywhere, even in a lot of the hamlets, except for West Sladeville and Hamlet, Beesmer.
Uh huh.
And I'm suggesting that we have an SUV in Hamlet, Beesmer and West Sladeville, also SUV.
Um, anyone want to second that?
I would second that. What's the use?
Car wash.
Car washes.
Okay. I am, I am somewhat torn about this because I kind of want to just take car washes out. Because I just think it's.
Car wash is a tough go and, and, of course, it doesn't have sewer water.
Yeah, that's exactly what I think.
A moot point, but, um, I think that, you know, in the general timber of, uh, you know, allowing more commercial uses, we might as well throw this one into the mix along with the rest. I don't see that it's
I, I guess.
Any more objectionable than a bank.
Uh, do car washes have to be approved by like the, the health department?
Uh, that, yeah, they're, they have the speedies permits for discharges and, you know, you gotta, you're gonna have to have a well test to show that you can get water without sucking everybody else dry.
Okay. So. I feel better now.
I, this, my car wash guy says there's no way I would ever think of this.
Okay, Michelle?
Oh, I, I've seen, uh, car washes in a rural area and, um, the latest thing seems to be they, they have incredibly bright lights that seem to be running all the time. So I'm gonna, yeah, that would be my problem with this.
Okay, any other?
So to, to, to say, that, that is the function of the special use permit requirement that, you know, we do have commercial lighting standards, right? That they include dark sky standards.
Right.
So theoretically, you know, other than, there's gonna be somewhere like, you know, they, their, their lights cannot directly shine off their property. Now, the light shining on the building is gonna wind up shining off the property, so I'm a little still concerned, but you could require those lights be off from ten PM. From ten P M until eight A M, right, that, that's, that could be a special use permit condition, and I would hope. Uh, that that would happen, because I, I agree that, that, you know, uh. Uh, the speedies permit handles some of the water and dispels the issues, but it doesn't handle other aspects of the business. What I had debated on this is whether to. Propose we just allow it in West Sladeville, but not in Beesmer, and I'm, I don't know, you know. So with, with the understanding that we would really try to handle noise and light. Conditions with. With conditions placed on the use via the SUP, the fact that without sewer, uh, it seems unlikely, we're gonna have one here. I'm willing to go along with this.
Yeah, I'm just saying that. Since it's SUP across the board and all the other hamlets, except for. West Sladeville, Hamlet Beesmer, it just doesn't make sense to me not have a SUP in the other two hamlet.
Okay, uh, with that, all in favor of this, say aye?
Aye.
I'm understanding, okay, nay?
Uh, nay.
I'm saying aye, so that passes, okay. Uh. Bruce, you have one more, you said?
Yep. Brewery and winery, surgery, we're still.
Uh huh.
We've got SPR everywhere, except for Hamlet Beesmer. I suggest that, make a motion when we have SPR in Hamlet Beesmer also.
I'll second it. Okay. Uh, so that's brewery, that's Bruce and Barb. Make. Um. Beesmer. SPR. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you, Bruce. And. We have a little more time, we're going on to the dimensions table, increase allowed commercial building footprint. In some districts, specifically ag rural, perhaps focus commercial in Sladeville Springs. Perhaps West Sladeville, who added this, I forget.
Th- this is me, so again, I will say, I, I am not prepared with a specific proposal, so I, but I did want to hear people's thoughts. Because of course, we've been around on some of these things more than a few times. Um. And, and I also just want to do a little more research and looking, and part of this is brought on, you know, uh. There were not a lot of comments directed this direction, but there was a specific. Point made about Red Barn cabinets that made me look at that. And while I think the, the individual comment was incorrect, which is that indeed. Uh, you know, Ben Boynton could have located there if our zoning had been in place. Um, he could have just located there, and he would have had to, rather than having one, six thousand square foot building, would have had to have built two, three thousand square foot buildings. So, you know, it made me look again at the question of the commercial builders' heights we're, we're allowing, and it is an area in which I. Feel very inexperienced and, and, and a lack of knowledge, so I. Wanted a little more time to try to. Maybe get a little knowledge or, or feedback. But. The point being that now that we've got, um, a development unit. Formulation that helps guide the density of commercial as well as residential development in the ag rural area. Um, and. I think that it may, a- and we of course have, I think, held a fairly. Tight but good reign on the type of businesses that can operate in the ag rural area. That. Still, there might be reason to then loosen up the size of operations that could be in the ag rural area. Because basically, if you want to do something big in Caroline, um, where can you go? To do it, so our focus commercial area is one of those. Um, to some extent, Sladeville Springs is, but that's a pretty densely developed area already. So I am willing to consider the thought of increasing. The commercial building footprint and total commercial building si- uh, uh, area in the ag rural zone. Um, and that's just a thought, but I have no concrete number, concrete proposal, but I did. Want to hear other people's thoughts, uh, on whether there's any stomach for thinking about that. And there may be reason to nudge up, like, you know, we've got, um. In West Sladeville, the Austin, you know, construction building happens to be just right around six thousand square feet, depending on whose number you believe. Um, you know, I don't know, five thousand is a nice round number, but, but I, there's several buildings that are six thousand square feet that I came across, maybe that's a better round number, I don't know. So I'm going to think about it and make a concrete proposal next meeting, but I just. I threw it out there.
Okay, does anyone want to talk about that?
Yes.
And does.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. I'll call on Nan first, because I sort of hand up. Okay.
No, I just wanted to in, to throw into the discussion that. Um, there, there, that is why we have area variances. Um, that on a case by case basis, someone could make the case for why a building would need to be builder, uh, bigger. So I, I'm not saying that we want to rely on area variances, but there, that is the weak bell. Um, so if there's, you know, some rationale for why a particular parcel might be appropriate for a bigger use. That is the, the mechanism, so I just wanted to remind folks that. That is the purpose of the area variance.
Okay. Um, Ernie?
Yeah, so I've always felt that these, uh, thresholds are, were way too small, um. Uh, you know, there's, there's no way you could build a grocery store or. A brewery or a. Permissure manufacturing, uh, the facility or, you know, many, many reasonable businesses. For the town of Caroline cannot be. Profitable, it can, cannot even operate in that small footprint, and that the threshold really should be. You know, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand square feet, if we want to keep, you know, the, the. Amazon warehouses out of here, but still allow something to go ahead. Uh, Bill had asked me this question informally, and I looked back at some of my records, original Ithaca Beer Company, which many of you may be familiar with. Was, um. Fifteen thousand square foot building. It's now twice that furnace. Um, and, uh, you know, is that? An unacceptable development for Caroline? I can't imagine many people objecting to that. Um, so I, I guess that my feeling is that, that we really, um. We really miss the vote on, on this one, but we need to seriously reconsider those numbers to. Uh, all the way across the board, but mostly in the rural area.
Okay, Michelle?
Well, I guess, uh, since, since we're now allowing, uh. You know, a lot of commercial activity throughout, are these sizes appropriate for every place that we're allowing? Would be my question. I mean, you want to have an Ithaca Beer Company, say, in, you know, Beesmer or West Sladeville, I mean, I don't think so.
Say that, uh, I believe I said that in the ag, ag rural district specifically, we need to be looking for considerably larger allowance. Um, I think that we need to consider whether we don't want to have a grocery store. Uh, you know, Brookton Dale or Sladeville, because you can't build one within the three thousand square foot.
Okay, um, so what I'm hearing is, um, Bill is gonna go off and think about a proposal. I think he's probably gonna consult with Ernie on this, is what it's sounding like, and if anyone else has some ideas, get them to Bill. Again, it would be great to have this in writing before the next meeting, so people can consider it. Um, that sounds really good to me.
I, I would just say, so, yeah, and I will try to get something right, but, um. You know, I, I am a little at sea, uh, I will fully admit. That I'm an academic, right, I, I have not run, operated, business, whatever, and so. Um, I would like to make some changes in some proposals, I also would like to figure out a way to, to get, understand what. Maybe real numbers are, and Ernie's obviously a great resource for that, but if anyone has any other ideas, I'm all ears. And, uh, and this could potentially be another area, and if we make some changes, but of course, also. Give some options for changes to the town board. Um, but I, I think this is something that we can try to handle some, but. Yeah, like, how do we really make a good decision on this? I don't really know. Um.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna give you. Two, two things that I have thought about with this, one is. Uh, if you get off the main road, and for instance, you do ag rural areas, you end up with some situations occasionally like Stork and Dandy. Where you have a very major, it's a great business, it's a big waiting business out in Dandy on Comfort Road, I think. Um.
The, uh.
Machine shop.
Yeah.
Machine shop.
It's a giant machine shop.
Yeah.
But, um. They had to replace that bridge there. Uh, with a much gianter bridge. Because of the size of the trucking in and out, so that's another consideration that you have to always think about with this. And in terms of commercial buildings, I am. All for the reality that I think is coming all across America, is that you do not have to have all of your buildings. Having their front right next to the road. Uh, I think you've seen this throughout Vermont and many other places, where you basically have a driveway that comes in from the road. And you use the land that's going back. And you utilize all that land, rather than having everything, you know, fifty feet away from, from the front of Route seventy-nine. So that, uh, when people think about like the focus commercial district. Um, that they realize that there's a fair amount of land there that can be used, if you don't insist on having your building right next to the. Right next to the road, that if you make it as a shopping center, essentially, when you go back in, you can get more businesses in. And I don't know how we would. Say that, except to say it somewhere in the report. Um, but I think it's a thing that really, um, everyone needs to think about. You just don't need to have all of your businesses strung out in a line. Um, Michelle?
Yeah, I'll just say, I have no idea how to make a decision about this either. Uh, so. So I guess on, on one hand, I don't really have the stomach to, to think about it, because I don't even know what I would be talking about, and I think this should be on the level. Of a recommendation, uh, to the town board, and I don't, I'm personally not gonna feel comfortable. Um, voting yes or no on increasing, uh, these dimensions. But if we are gonna have a vote, I hope we get the information, you know, well in advance, so that we have plenty of time to think about it, I hope it's not presented. Next week. At the meeting, for example, and think that, okay, we're gonna put this off again. You know, for the next meeting, I mean, I hope we can just wrap this up, because I don't think any of us, you know, is an expert on this, except maybe Ernie. But I'm not sure, Ernie, you know, you, you have the same, say, priorities that I would have, as far as. What is big of the building.
Let me do this, let me just. Take some examples of buildings that are common. They, you know, that are within Tompkins County, that I can find out some numbers on, and I will make up a little list, and everybody can. And decide whether or not we could go here, I mean, we obviously made a decision to use the numbers that we used at some point. So, you know, we should be able to be wise enough to change them, or just get rid of them entirely, which is the other option. So.
Thanks. Um, so good, so let's try to do that again also by Thursday, because Thursday seems to be my most popular day. For the week, um, if possible. So, then, we only have.
Sorry, so Jean, on that one, you're talking this Thursday, two days from now?
I am, is that possible?
Prob- probably not, but I'll. Do my darndest. I mean, Ernie, I'm not speaking for Ernie, I'm just speaking for anything I cook up.
This one, we'll say Sunday morning, and then.
Oh, no, no, I can, I'll, I'll try to get something by Saturday or Friday or something, so.
But, but it's hard to hurry here, I mean, why isn't this, are we having a meeting next week?
Yeah, we are, it's scheduled for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
So you wanted us to answer stuff by this Thursday for?
Yeah.
That's.
After Mark.
Yeah, I did. Okay, and, um. Because we wanted to get through looking at these, well, we actually remembered what people said. Um, so Article Six supplementary standards, parking shall be located at the rear or side of a commercial building. Um, that was you, Barb?
Yeah, so currently, section six point two point eight parking. Um, has item A, parking shall be located to the rear or side of a commercial building. And I'm suggesting that we delete that item. Um, and my reasoning for that is that deleting the requirement that parking shall be located to the rear or side of a commercial building. Um, would be in keeping with current town character, for example, Brookton Dale Post Office is parking in front, as does Celebration. As done, does the town hall and other public and private buildings, so. Um, in addition, um, to item A, which would be deleted under my motion, item B would remain. Which says, parking areas associated with the development shall be located no closer to the road. Than the closest facade of the building unless approved by the review board. If an exception is granted, parking areas located between structures and public roads. Are limited to a maximum of fifteen spaces and shall be buffered with a low growing hedge. And or an attractive fence or wall between the parking and the road.
Okay.
I would. Also note that it is very difficult to comply with the handicap. Parking and accessibility standards, when you have a requirement that parking be along the side, and entrances be at the front.
So Ernie, are you seconding that motion?
I am seconding that.
I thought you were. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Um, clause six point five point one A four, good God. Review clarify wording of inventory and supply shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the area permitted to be used as a home occupation or a residential secondary business. Pursuant to the New York State Building Code, should we say in this zoning law, rather than pursuant to the New York State Building Code? Because that changes frequently, I'm assuming.
Alright, so, 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 so this is mine, and this grew out of the, the, uh, Peter DeBoer discussion. Um. And, uh. Also, discussions we've had about a minor home business and a major home business, and how much of the pertinent structure can be used and all of that. So, um. And I'm just really wanting, this says. That not more than fifty percent of the area appearing to be used as a home occupation, da, da, da. Uh, pursuant to the New York State Building Code. But we all know that the New York State Building Code doesn't allow any of an pertinent structure to use for home occupation, if it's a major home occupation. So I don't know which number we're talking about there. Um, but also, it says a residential secondary business, but. Um, they aren't in the New York State Building Code at all, so I just thought that the wording maybe was a little imprecise. Um, I think Nan did explain in her email that, no, 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 what this means is that. You know, if it's a minor home occupation, they can use. Fifty percent of the fifty percent in their pertinent structure for storing, storing inventory. And if it's a major home occupation, I guess they use fifty percent of the hundred percent. So as long as that's what it really means, I'm okay. But it just seemed a little, um. The reference to the New York State Building Code seemed weird, given that we were superseding the building code in what the area we were allowing. Since the New York State Building Code doesn't allow any of the pertinent structure to be used for a home occupation, so. That's why I have this on here.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we get rid of the New York State Building Code part? Perhaps.
And instead, say, yeah, so what do you think, Nan, should we say that the, the, to be used as a home oc or residential secondary business pursuant to this zoning law?
I think that would clarify it. Because you are superseding state law with this, we'll have to note that, yeah.
I, I'm uncomfortable with that, I mean. We're not allowed to do that. Are we?
You, well, the general rule is that you can't be less strict than the state law, but there are. There are plenty of places that feel that the. In a rural area, that the. Um. Prohibition of. Home occupations in accessory buildings from the state billing code is not realistic. Lots of, lots of places supersede state law in this way.
Opinion, that's not law, I mean, you know, I just, I guess I just don't. Feel like it's our, our. Place in this to suggest that people break the law. That, that we're gonna condone breaking the law.
So, but Ernie, what that might mean is that a minor home business could not use any of their outdoor structure to store inventory.
Yeah, well, this is why I'd kind of like to just kind of back away from the whole thing. Um, and just not be real specific about these things, so that, yeah, okay, this can kind of, uh, disappear. And nobody can make any boo about it, but I think that if somebody really had an issue with your business, although it conform with zoning. They could go to the. State co- board, code board and say, hey, I got a problem here. And the guys with the shiny badge will show up on your door and say cease and desist.
Can I ask Nan a question? I think you did answer this in the email, and I've forgotten the answer, but. Why? Is there any limit? Why does this clause exist at all? What would be the consequence? Is there any limit? Why does this clause exist at all? What would be the consequence of? Deleting it so that we are silent on what fraction can be used for inventory and supplies? I think you said because you don't want the whole yard cluttered up uh and so maybe there needs to be a different language to that effect?
Yeah, I think that was in there so that you didn't have um. You you didn't, yeah, so that the the whole entire yard wasn't used for storage and inventory. Uh but that doesn't.
Part of our.
We could change that language, but you still have the fifty percent and the hundred percent use of accessory dwellings that is. You know, still not consistent. You would have to specifically supersede state law. We would write that in there and say that you are. Explicitly superseding state law for that.
Well, but you say we have to do it anyway because our definition of major and minor allow fifty percent and a hundred percent. So we already, that's where we're superseding state law.
Right.
I'm less concerned here, only I want to be able, you know, if they've got a home business, I want to be able to store some inventory on the on the property. But I I don't want them cluttering up the whole yard with it, even though that is rural character. Um. So I don't have a resolution.
I'm suggesting what you think about this because I I don't know. I'm confused about this. Um Barb?
I I'm I'm not sure that um that this does anything about what's in the yard, actually.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
It says inventory and supply shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the area permitted to be used as a home occupation or residential secondary business. And we talk about um, you know, floor area of the dwelling unit or an accessory structure. So we're not saying anything about the yard or anything. So.
Well, it's silent on the question of where the inventory is kept.
Yeah.
So you so you have a a hundred square foot of a pertinent structure, using fifty square feet of that is allowed. So you use the fifty square feet in your yard for the storage. I mean. You know, uh we actually don't say that it has to be stored in the a pertinent structure.
Yeah, I I guess I would be inclined to just delete uh that item four, but um we can talk about it next time.
I I'm looking, I'm agree. I'm I'm about ready to delete four.
The citation again, just.
It's on page seventy five.
Okay.
And it's the last thing on page seventy five.
But I think if there's thinking through, I don't want to like rashly decide tonight.
Right, so we're thinking about that. And we have, I think we can actually get through about two other things here. Uh so it's going on to the next page six B. Which is confirm or change that needing all outdoor lighting. Noise, signage, landscaping and parking requirements of this zoning law for commercial structures means that the whole zoning law adjusts the standards of section six two. The so the operation of an equipment used by the home based business shall.
Right. So so again, this is this is mine again, growing out of the a close read about the requirements on home businesses. So. The first section, so six point five point one point A or whatever, is about all. Home occupations, minor or major.
Right.
And it has this line that says they're going to meet. This set of requirements in the zoning law for commercial structures. And I want to clarify, and I think that what Nan said is, yeah, um that it does, that there's not, there are standards in section six point two. But also there are standards in the site plan review section. That's the big long article seven or. Uh section seven point four, which has lighting and noise and other standards. And so did we really mean for all those standards in the site plan review to be applied to a minor home occupation? Um I I would move that we change this so that it's a major home occupation, which we actually already have that language in there. It has to meet those, but then a minor does not. Um but that's. Yeah.
That emotion.
That's a motion, but but maybe there needs to be more discussion first. I don't know.
No, I'll second it. Now we have discussion.
Okay, so that's Bill and Ernie. Any discussion?
So the 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 movement here is to uh eliminate requirements of uh the commercial design standards for. Small home occupations.
Yes.
I think so. I to be honest, I I would have to debate whether I would still want them to meet six point two, but I think the answer is no. I think I think. But I may need to think about it more.
The other things might be pertinent is assigned standards in there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we could do, and maybe this then needs to be put off, is take a look at this list, which is lighting, noise, signage, landscaping, parking. And for a minor, think about which of those we that are in six point two, we want them to comply with. And that there'll be a different list for the major, which basically is going to say all these things, you got to meet six point two and seven point four.
Okay. Uh when you could stick some of these things into B for as you've got major and you've got minor and B and C, and maybe that's a way of dealing with it. So let's.
I think it bears a little thinking and not a decision tonight. Are people in agreement on that?
Yes, I know. It has a star next to it, which means next week. Okay, and we have one more here, which is clause section six point five point one point B. Uh keep allowing percentage usage of an accessory structure for a minor home occupation of fifty percent as is or changed to as allowed by law. For example, the New York State Building Code. So let me look at six point five point one point B. Uh, okay, I see that's in two, I think, in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um. And Bill, this I think also comes out of the De Boer.
Uh well, this is actually Barb's uh original proposal. I just, you know, worded a little bit differently here, but no, that that was that was Barb's suggestion and there was discussion by email about this. Um and I I think, you know, Barbara originally was saying, well, gee, could we increase that to a hundred percent if New York State allows? Uh and then that's when Nan chimed in that really New York State doesn't allow any. Um and you're superseding the state when you say fifty percent. Uh and then Ernie chimed in, well, what about saying is allowed by law? But then, you know, so so we went back and forth and I. My sense of the email traffic was that we were going to stay with fifty percent, but I thought that should be a a formal decision here, but Barb may want to speak to. This.
No, that that was my sense. After Nan said New York State doesn't even allow that much, um I backed off on proposing any change. And we would just keep it as it is now at fifty percent.
Even though it's.
Even though it's against the law.
This is really kind of interesting to me. This.
Civil disobedience.
I mean, I, you know, I agree completely, but.
Yeah, having a law that conflicts with the law.
Yeah, I mean, to be making up our own rules here, this is kind of like, you know, Republic of Texas or something.
Yeah, well, again, the sense from Nan is that we're in good company. I mean, that 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 this is clearly a rule that maybe should be changed at the state level because it does not reflect the reality of rural towns. It was written by a bunch of. Folks in Albany that live in New York City or to be really facetious, but you know.
So so I mean, if if um. So if we're willing to supersede New York State law, I would then suggest changing that to um. Up to one hundred percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit or accessory structure can be used for the minor home occupation. If we're going to break the law, let's just go for it, right?
Live there.
No, yeah, I I can't.
I'm sorry, I miss I misspoke. I meant of the accessory structure, a hundred percent. Up to a hundred percent of the floor area of the accessory structure.
Go for what the heck, you know, it's like.
Okay, so I think I have Barb and Bill as a.
So so let me let me just correct what that would read. So it would say not have more than fifty percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit. Or um. You know, up to one hundred percent of the accessory structure. Or or could have up to one hundred percent of the accessory structure used for the minor home occupation.
Okay, and and I am not going to second that until I get the benefit of Nan's wisdom on this.
Nan?
And this is that and or? And this remember, Barb, it was Bill and Barb.
Well, I, you know, I think this is one that um. Yeah, it it is an interesting uh dilemma. Um I think that. If you wanted to. Be true to what you are trying to accomplish from a policy perspective. You wanted to encourage home based businesses. Um and people have garages and barns that they want to have businesses in. They might not even want the business in their home. So I I I just think that in order to meet that. That actually, when we started off, the home occupation was the businesses you wanted in the Egg World District, not all of these other things. So it 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 just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. That is the policy that was really discussed in your comprehensive plan was to promote. Home based businesses. And so I I think this is one area that to supersede state law um. Is the policy that makes, that meets your community goals. You know, whether you're comfortable with a fifty percent or a hundred percent. Um I I I don't have any comment on one that's better than the other, but I just think that. That you have to go back to what you're trying to accomplish.
So I would like to um be clear on the wording that I'm suggesting um as the revision and it would be um. I item B two would read. Have up to fifty percent of floor area of the dwelling unit. And or up to one hundred percent of the accessory structure used.
And accessory?
And annex and accessory structure.
Single.
And or up to one hundred percent of an accessory structure. Used for the minor home occupation or residential secondary business, period.
All right, I will second that.
Okay.
So so what happens if they want two bars?
Cost?
No, no, that's a major. I mean, is it, I don't know.
Okay, that's um we have a, we have a motion, uh all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any?
And 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 Ernie, I agree. It maybe has to be, if you want to use several outdoors, you know, again, again, no matter what it is, it's got to be. Secondary to the use of the property as a residence. And once you've got like three barns you're running a big business out of compared to your, you know, two thousand square foot house or whatever, you know, that starts to. Break that part of the definition, but if they've got three small sheds and a big house, that's fine for a major home business, I guess I would say.
Okay, we have about four minutes and what I'm going to say is we have uh done a huge amount. Thank you. Uh the only other thing in here is uh. Article nine, clause nine point three C, discuss twenty five percent as the maximum amount that a nonconforming building may be expanded. This was an issue that came up uh during the hearings. Um is that?
Interoperating zone.
In a. Yeah, yeah, it did.
Right, well, it came up in a written comment, but I will I will say again, Jean, that. I don't, none of us have read the written comments. There may be additional items that come to us when we read the written comments, so.
This was in regard to the repair.
It was.
No, no, this is a not so, again, mistakenly. Mr. De Boer thought that his home business was a nonconforming use because of his noise um and storage of materials. Um he was wrong in that, of course, that's a non, that that's non compliance with the law, not a not not nonconforming. But he said, by the way, you know, I don't like this nonconforming thing. And then he went on to say, and what I really don't like. Is my house is nonconforming and he's right because it's in the repairing buffer zone. And so that's correct, but then he said, and because it's not conforming, I can only expand twenty five percent. So it's it's whether any nonconforming building can only be expanded twenty five percent was his critique. And so this really, well, was generated by the apparent buffer layer is a general question about should that number. In his characterization be larger for how much you can expand a building that's nonconforming.
Well, I think that this is one of these things that when you go out and you look at what he's would propose, you would say, sure, why not? You know, and just like the 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 picture that the woman gave us of her property and she wants to build this little addition out onto her lawn and you say. Sure, why not? But because it's in this zone that we fabricated. Um it it becomes an obstacle and I I think, you know.
Well, well, let's talk about it next week, but but her little addition, is it really more than twenty five percent? I mean, I think that's the bottom line. Is twenty five percent the right cap or not?
Yeah, well, I think that that I think that that my general feeling is is that I I just really don't fully understand. How this is affecting all of these properties. Up and down these creeks to. To really know whether twenty five percent is okay or not. Um and I don't. I don't know that we have the time or inclination to go and research all of that. Um.
But it it also applies to a seven thousand square foot building that's in the um some a district that only allows five thousand square foot buildings. That same twenty five percent limit applies to that building.
Right.
So it's not just the riparian zone.
Uh Tim wants to say something.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to mention I had sent a note to Jean and Nan, but I I forgot to bring it up at the beginning because I don't think it was on the list, but I did notice in reading the. The draft that there seems to be an inconsistency. Uh regarding the twenty five percent and in one place it says twenty percent. And I'm looking at page sixty one F, it says twenty percent. And everywhere else it says twenty five percent. So that's just something to check out.
Yeah, um I have a list of those inconsistencies. We just haven't gotten to them tonight. So um and I will make sure that I share those with everyone before next week. Um and there's also then at the bottom of this list that we are going through right now, there are just a bunch of typos which. Um we can easily change. So I will make sure those get to Nan. There are things like, you know, a wrong heading number or. Um Dandy Martin Sladeville to Dandy Martin Sladeville Springs. Um so uh. And um you all have either, you all have in your email the copy of the. The um. Written comments now, and if you want to pick up a copy, were you able to make one for Bruce?
Yeah, I couldn't do it without my computer. I would care to start doing it before you leave that. Yeah, I want to just pick it up tomorrow.
Okay.
I I just pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, so you can stop in and pick them up from Jesse if you want to this week. That would be fine.
Because I couldn't get it at the, from yours, it was. I'll speed up on mine.
Okay, so um so we'll read those and we'll make a list of other things that have come up. Um including, um I think Mr. Nelson Mix's. Um thing that he sent. I need to go and look through that. And I have, um I think that we passed. Uh nineteen motions this evening. And uh we have about eight things that are starred to talk about next week. And we said we would meet at the same time next week. And I am hoping to God that that might be our last meeting. Well, we'll see. Um where we pass this off. And one of the things that we want to do. Is if there are things that we think the board should look at in detail, we should tell them that. That, you know, this is um, you know, for instance, the whole issue of commercial zone. That, you know, if this is a big issue, you might want to look at this at this in more detail. Let's make a list of those things and we can include those in the report. Okay? Anything else to say tonight?
I just have a question. Is this, what we're talking about the percentage? Of the develop, is that just in a main residence or is that all structures, twenty five percent?
Any nonconforming structure is allowed to expand by up to twenty five percent. A nonconforming structure would be a structure that is in existence at the time the zoning law is passed, that does not conform with the uh re- requirements for that district. So, you know, again, whether it's in because it's in the water, it's overlay or because the building is a commercial building that's larger than the size uh commercial building size allowed in that district.
Okay. Good, um I am going to look through Mr. Mix's stuff uh tomorrow and if there's something that I think is really confusing and I don't understand. I will be in touch with Nan. Um.
Did he say that he sent that to all to Eugene or to to town clerk? Because he said he sort of revised it to conform to the new draft.
He said that he wrote, it sent his original on January second to me and the town clerk and then sent it again today to me and the town clerk. Which is past their deadline, but he had sent it originally on on January second. And he sent me a copy of what he sent on January second, so I can see how that compares to the one he just sent today. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you and um happy reading. And I'll see you all in a week.
And I'm very.
And I'm very confident.
Thanks for everything, Nan.
Yep.